Well, I mean, it's good that she can go see Phyllis and they they travel a lot. They go a lot of places together and it's good that they can do that.
Well, the funny thing is Phyllis doesn't like to fly. She won't, she won't fly here if she drives.
I know she drives here. Every time she comes, she drives.
And that kind of have, you know, if you actually work for United.
It says Little City Council May Day.
Oh, just change the date after it gets done.
And it might be that she likes to have her vehicle here when she gets here. That's mine. He like, he'll go for a week training and he'll drive to Cleveland because he wants his car while he's there.
That's smart. If I kicked it all over, messed it up, then.
Um, he doesn't wanna.
We're live online.
Rely on, you know, other people driving or renting a car. He'd rather have his own vehicle and, oh, it's after six, isn't it? I'm just sitting here chatting.
We're live online.
Only for like thirty seconds.
Are we live?
Only for, yeah, only for the last minute, thirty seconds, maybe, maybe a little longer than that.
Okay.
Trying to help you.
Okay, it is, um, six oh two. We're gonna call the meeting to order. The May Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Yeah, it's playing and not recording. And, um, in attendance, we have Jim and Ryan and myself and Bill and Mike. And Jim Montenlend and Jeremy Godston. First thing on our agenda is, uh, the approval of the April eighteenth regular meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Y'all seen them? Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Do we need to go over anything?
I don't think, I think some of them out of email, I haven't seen anything.
Ryan, can you pass those down, pass that down to?
There you go, sir.
Does anybody need a copy to review? I made a few copies. That's okay. While he's reading over those minutes, Jeremy, this pre-application for ten twenty North Center Street?
Yes, ma'am.
Are they gonna, are they gonna come talk to us? Or we're just gonna go over this?
They indicated that they were gonna come today, but it doesn't appear like they'll make it. But it'll be good for us, for us ourselves, I guess.
Alright, um, so everyone has had a chance to review the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve minutes for May.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so the, uh, approval for the minutes, um, is approved unanimously. The second, um, item on the agenda is the pre-application for ten twenty North Center Street. And, um, does everybody have a copy of this? Jeremy, do you wanna talk to us about this?
Okay, um, this is on North Center Street. Um, I believe we had a application last month over a different project. This one is a new direction. What they are planning on doing on this is to build a little subdivision. They will, this is more just a pre-application, just kind of to talk about this, to see where we have. Again, this is in the overlay district, so they will have to meet the requirements to where, I'm assuming that if it goes this direction, based on the overlay district, lots one and eleven would probably have to face Center Street, I would imagine. Because that's one of the rules of the overlay district, so that's something they may need to consider. Especially with lot eleven being as narrow as that side is. And the fact that I don't know if R dot will allow them to do a street cut on Center Street in addition to the new road they're, um, proposing. So that's just something they might wanna consider.
Are these duplexes?
I'm not certain. That was gonna be a question I was gonna ask to the developer today. Because in it, it lists that the zoning is R two. And it's actually zone C two. I think that's just a guess on their part, because when they submitted this, they did say to me that they could not find the zoning map on the website. So they may have, I don't know how, um, it's not that hard.
It's there, yeah.
But, um, they, so I'm guessing that the R two zoning that they have on this is just a shot at what it is. So that was gonna be a question today, because if they are looking at this to be all single-family residences, C two is not zoned for single families, so they would have to get a conditional use for every single lot. And I don't know if that would necessarily be aligned with the general plan for those to all be single-family.
But they're replating it, these into separate properties, though.
Yes.
So that would imply a single-family develop.
Or they're obliged they're gonna be duplexes or something. So it's gonna be a question I was gonna ask them.
Duplexes as they're replating, why would you go to the trouble to?
Well, I guess you wouldn't, because if you would, unless you were gonna be selling them as duplexes, it would be kinda odd.
I don't think those lots are big enough to do duplexes on.
Uh, there's, some of them are.
It, it has on, on this here, uh, thirteen duplexes, twenty-six units, and nine single-family homes.
Is it five thousand?
Yeah, is this, does this go with this?
No.
It does not, no, this is something different.
Oh, okay. My bad.
That's okay, cuz I looked at that too, thinking, oh, well, here it is, right here.
Right.
And then I realized, oh, that doesn't go. Alright, I have to.
Yeah, that may remember, I believe the requirement for square footage on duplexes is seventy-five hundred.
For the lots, for the lot size.
Which wouldn't be too small. So, yeah, my guess is that there probably are intending for these to be single-family lots. Which would be meaning that they would have to apply for a con, if they keep it in C two, they would have to apply for a conditional use.
Or they applied to rezone.
For every single lot.
Or they applied to rezonate.
Or they'd rezonate to R two.
Yeah, cuz these are small, these are very small lots. They're only a tenth, most of them are only a tenth of an acre.
Which being that they have this set as R two and the minimum square footage for a single family on R two would be five thousand. That would be most likely, based on what they are, that's probably what they're indicating, is to rezone it as R two. And.
They otherwise meet, they otherwise meet the setbacks for R two? Looks like it, ten, ten in the back, twenty-five in the front, five and five?
I think most of, most of them are one, a one-tenth of an acre, it looks like.
And that kind of, it is indicating that's probably what they're doing, a single-family, R two.
Yeah, it's gonna be, because these lots, um, like the interior lot two and three, those are fifty feet wide. So you're looking at like little shotgun homes.
Yeah, fifty feet's the minimum in R two, so that's probably, like I said, that's probably their indication is to go to R two.
So they may be pursuing a rezoning.
A rezoning along with, uh.
Is this a different owner now than the previous?
Like.
I did not indicate, it, on this, on this sheet, it does read as a new owner, as opposed to the previous site survey they gave us. Now, I don't know if it's just a different developer, same owner, or what it is. I didn't ask that question and, in all fairness, I'm not obligated to tell me that either.
Sure, sure, yeah. But the same applicant did not come back with this this time, okay.
No, did not. This is a different, uh, same firm, different names on the piece of paper.
Okay.
Where is this? Ryan.
Sir?
Where's this actual location?
It's in the curve on thirty-one.
Across from Marty Mart, or is it called now Jack Rabbit?
Eleventh Street.
Gas station or whatever.
Uh, and there's a, there's another house just north of there where these.
Just to, there's that little side road right there that you see on the north.
Yeah.
East side.
Right, uh-huh.
Next to that is that little single family, which is a business right now. Yes, kind of set back pretty far from the road. So really, the big question, if they are looking at a rezon, something to consider for the council, uh, before the replat or anything like that, is if that's appropriate to rezon that, if you are.
I don't think it's inappropriate, just initially, I don't know that they're asking for it, but just there's, there's residential everywhere around it. I know it's on thirty-one.
Yes.
It's on Center Street, but I'm just saying, uh, there's new residential nearby. There's senior living, you know, senior housing immediately adjacent to it, which is multifamily, but so just, uh, an observation without them being here to answer any questions, but do you happen to know if the center line lines up with, um, Eleventh Street?
It does not.
I would like to see that happen.
Okay, uh, I don't know if that's possible. They could probably get pretty close. Um, I don't know, I hadn't thought about that, to really, really look at it, but.
It looks like it is close. I just can't tell from the.
No, cuz I think Eleventh Street, so this is, if you, if you look at this document, you've got on the, um, on the east side.
Mm-hmm.
That is the, that's the turn-in on the very east side of the property. That's, that's the turn-in, so they're looking at creating a completely new turn-in.
I know, I know, I'm talking about.
Oh, I know, but Eleventh Street is like over here.
Is it? It, it's across the street. It looks like it's close to being aligned. That, my comment would be that it should.
I'll make sure to have a, have that.
If you, if you, if you look at the, the vicinity map and if you kinda overlay it on the.
Yeah, Eleventh Street's pretty close.
Now, to be fair, there is no distinct line where Eleventh Street and the, um, and the gas station.
It's a parking lot.
But it, but it's not, but it is. It's like the situation we created with Sonic and the access road, which for the record, years ago, I was against that too, but.
We need to look at the regulations and see if there's anything in those, uh, development regulations that require lining up with existing streets because if it doesn't.
Yeah.
The only review is to see if they meet the minimum standards of the.
And that's what happened to Sonic. I'm like, I would really, really want y'all to, they're like, no, we don't, we don't want to. I'm like, this is a bad design. I really want you to do that.
Oh, definitely is.
Well, we don't have to. That is true.
Yeah.
So.
But that, that might be something that, next time we really make a major review, to put that in the subdivision.
Yeah. In, in the be fair, there's.
Will line up wherever practical or something like that.
Exactly, and Eleventh Street as a, as a thoroughfare is not clear, clearly distinct from the parking lot of, of the gas station, but there is a right-of-way there somewhere.
Based upon where the power line's hitting on that, I would agree with you that it is pretty close.
Yeah, yeah, that overhead, yeah. Yeah, so anyway, it's, that's an observation I would like to see.
I agree, it makes, it makes sense, because it's a, it's a traffic hazard for it would be that close and not be.
Right.
Based on people turning left and right, right and right. So, yeah, I'll make it, I'll be sure if it comes, if they have all their stuff together by the June meeting, that I will include a site, satellite site, and it'll show where eleven runs into this.
Did you say R dot would have to approve this, this here? The, the drive?
By indication, they do have to approve that, that right there.
Yeah, which will, which will require an additional permit from the developer. That's not ours.
If these are single-family homes, then the overlay regulations shouldn't apply to single-family homes.
I think it makes a distinction in.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't say whether they have to or not, it just says along that front fair, they have to be facing Center Street.
I was, I was thinking the overlay district excluded single-family homes.
Compasses everything on either side. But that might be right, I'm not sure, sir.
Yeah, all development within the overlay district, except for single-family homes.
Ninth Street is here.
Okay, then you come on.
We're here.
Okay, I was getting access in there. You know, Hannah holds a lot of that property back in.
I'm not sure.
Is it in the U D C?
It does say in the Development Code in the review procedure, all development within the overlay district except the construction of a single-family home in a planted subdivision. This is, would be a.
It says what? All?
All development within the overlay district, except for the construction of a single-family home in a s, in a planted subdivision.
There you go.
Shall be reviewed by the Planning Commission. So basically, well, reviewed by the Planning Commission.
For, except for the reason that exception is there is, uh, because we excluded single-family homes from Planning Commission review to fast-track them through the administrative process.
But it does not say that single-family homes are exempt from.
Compliance with the overlay. Which is not that, it's just a, it's a material compliance and it's an over, it's a orientation compliance.
Yeah.
But to your point, Jeremy, that may phys, not physically be possible due to the way that the, um, R dot regs are, so I think I would, I would be willing to entertain a variance if so, if one is requested on an individual basis.
Yeah.
My, my guess is if these are platted for individual, single-family homes and they're not spec, building spec houses, they're trying to sell them off and develop them, those are gonna be the last ones to go, cuz people aren't gonna wanna be by the highway anyway.
I would, I would agree with that.
When the time comes, I would think we'd reserve that. Cause my, again, we're guessing because the applicant's not here to explain the intent, so.
Yeah, but I mean, we, I've had this inner discussion, and that was the first thing I said, is that if these are single-family, I don't wanna live there. Or I wouldn't wanna, I would do, take a little bit more, watch, it's probably why those two are slightly bigger lots as well. But it's a consideration that, uh, the, uh, part the developer may wanna consider.
Okay.
I was reading it more, and when I was saying that if we, if they're required along that overlay district to face the road, then it does create a problem with drives and how they're gonna handle that if R dot doesn't wanna make a drive on the front and just have it on the side, especially with lot eleven.
I think pragmatically, we could require the material requirement without the orientation requirement, because it's nearly physically impossible to entertain a private drive.
On Center.
And on the curve, it actually, you could make a very reasonable argument that it's dangerous.
Absolutely.
So they have left enough frontage on the private drive, or it's not private drive, I guess, I guess it'll be, we don't know. But they have left enough frontage on the new road to create, uh, an out, you know, a driveway.
Yes, you're right.
I would think, I mean, if it's a, if it's a single-family residence, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want my driveway on Center Street.
Not hardly.
So I don't see them.
So did they say if they intend to bring this back? I mean, this is a preliminary plat.
They're intent, I mean, they really, when I asked them, they sent this to me and my, when I first told them, this was last week on like Wednesday. I was just told, I can't do anything really with you this month other than give you the basics of what's required, and that is have this information for a pre-plat approval in by June first.
Yep, so this is the pre-pre.
Yeah, there's, there is, it's really kind of funny, there's a, there's a pre-application and then there's the pre-plat application.
And the pre-plat is an official action, which we're not taking tonight.
No, no, this is just, there is allowed on subdivisions for someone just to give us a sketch or something like this and say, hey, look at this and tell me whether this is feasible.
And this is, that's basically what this is.
That's what this all is, and they were intent on being here today so that they could address any possible issues we had, and then with the intention of having it filed for next month.
So it's helpful for the commission to understand that if this is going to be a single-family development, all we're, all we would be doing next month, provided they've checked all the boxes, is approving a preliminary plat. And then eventually the final plat, which I guess they could concurrently submit.
Well, you, they can't, they can't, well, it depends on if we go, uh, by this book, it says you cannot submit for a final plat until two months after.
Okay.
At the earliest.
But we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be approving, nothing else would come before us unless it's multifamily, because if these are single-family homes, those are approved in your, in your, at your desk, not in this body.
Next month, all they would be doing is submitting this with construction drawings, asking for a plea, approval for a plea, a pre-plat.
At theoretic.
Point, we could give them, you know, to start building infrastructure.
And theoretically, a rezoning application.
They could, they would, if, if they're intense for single-family, yeah, they'd need to real.
So let me ask this, if we approved a plea-pre plat with, it is, without a rezone, we, we can't really do that.
Well, we could.
Because as you mentioned.
They would just have to do a conditional use every time they wanted to build a single-family home.
So we could approve a pre-plat that is technically feasible for the construction of single-family homes? And they would be making the assumption that eleven conditional uses would eventually be granted for the construction of single-family homes?
That would be quite a risk, yes, they could.
So the logical path is rezone.
Yes, yes.
Which they could also pursue next month.
I don't think you could approve, you're not gonna approve something tonight.
No, 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 sir, next month.
Next month, well, what's, next month, though, they will either have to come in for a rezoning or.
That's what I'm saying. That's the conclusion I'm getting to, yeah.
As for tonight, all you could do is say, no, these are the issues we've noted.
Yes, sir.
That's provided down.
Yep.
I would also note that there is no fire hazard indicated on here, and we even talked about this with the previous one. They will end up having to put a fire hydrant, uh, at least at the entrance, and I hadn't done any measuring really, but one, two, three, four, uh, probably would have to put one in the back too, cuz it's gotta be within a five-hundred radius and just, uh, adding over. They're, they're probably over five-hundred feet, I may, it's gonna be close. But that's, that's, I'll give that to our fire marshal to give his opinion on that, as well as the turnaround, they kind of, that design.
Can you let the engineer know as soon as possible that
Yeah, I'll get that.
That it's not zoned for residential, if that's their intent, they need to pursue that pretty much first.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the rezone is gonna take
Same amount.
A lot more, well, we would have to have a hearing, a public hearing, and then the city council has to approve.
What?
City council has to approve.
A rezone? Yeah, but, that, you could, you could, you could hear the rezoning and then if you approve the rezoning, approve the plat.
Yeah.
Plat wouldn't become, you wouldn't sign it until the city council
Right.
confirm the, the rezoning. But you could approve them though, they just couldn't get it signed. But if a conditional, when it's been conditional use, this is.
Yeah.
This will be signed if and when the, uh,
Yeah.
city council approves the rezoning.
Would that require a public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, sir. But sequentially, if they're bringing this to, uh, Planning Commission next month, city council will have, would have met the prior Monday. So it's July.
Apply for rezoning next month and then the pre-plat in July, probably.
That's right.
That probably be the only, their best option.
It's the most logical option sequentially, it's the.
Yeah, cuz they wouldn't, they wouldn't spend any more money on it until the rezoning. Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna approve a pre-plat and then the city council say, no, we can't do the rezon.
That being the case, there's not a whole lot about this that doesn't work if they wanna do single-family homes of a certain size, which I think the market needs homes of all size, but perhaps this is a good location for what they're doing.
Can I make a suggestion?
Please.
That requirement for facade facing Center Street, any reasonable person on earth would believe that that refers to a commercial building.
Okay.
Would it be possible, if they're gonna have to have a rehearing anyway, that we submit at the same time a public hearing to exclude single-family homes on.
Just make a.
Subdivision from that requirement, that, that's a, that's a very troublesome requirement.
I'm sorry, say that again.
We kinda do that.
I don't think we do.
Say that again, what you, what you just said, if we do what?
Could, could, since it's gonna have to be a public hearing anyway, could the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and amend the code to say that that facade requirement doesn't apply to a single-family home in a planted subdivision?
The facade.
The sidewalk?
The facade requirement.
Facade, if the facade has.
Facade requirement.
I don't think any reasonable person would say that you would want one house in the subdivision to face Center Street. You're right, it doesn't, I mean, it excludes, the, the way our ordinance is written, it excludes residential from Planning Commission review, not the front, the side rule, so, I mean, yeah, we can.
No, it,
Yeah.
it excludes single-family homes from the overlay district.
No, it doesn't. Jim is saying it needs to. We would have to take action to clarify.
Maybe you want, maybe you want all the homes, those two homes to face Center Street.
So there's.
I wouldn't want.
You still have.
If it was my house, I wouldn't want my house to face Center Street.
But that's not the issue. The issue is we're technically requiring them to by the fact that we have not excluded residential from the requirement.
Right, we've recruited, we've excluded single-family from the Planning Commission review, not from the requirement.
Not from the requirement. And the reason single-family is excluded from Planning Commission review is because as of several years ago, it only has to go through Jeremy's office.
I, I guess, I.
So you're on Center Street, you're single-family.
Reading, hang on just a second. Let me, what page is, I don't have it in my little tabs. What page is the Center states?
Thirty-six is the review procedure.
In the U D C?
Yeah. Thirty, thirty-six is what he's talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, he's absolutely wrong, I mean, there's no, yes. I'm sure the witness was drawn up, nobody ever envisioned subdivision being. Built like this.
Right. So, right, right now, there's only two single-family homes that face Center Street. North Center, in the overlay district, so. That's at, uh.
Next door and.
Yeah, five nineteen. And seven oh five. Uh, well, okay, I'm sorry, the one next door, but isn't it commercial?
Kinda is, yeah.
But their offices are.
I don't have a father, so I just build a single-family house somewhere along Center Street, then, yeah, you face the street. But in a planted subdivision like this, that's where it becomes troublesome.
Yes, yeah.
So, what, what you're saying is that you. Would like to discuss the possibility of not requiring a single-family home to face Center Street.
In a planted subdivision.
In a planted subdivision.
I think that was all this part, cause I just don't think that, that makes sense to make these two. If this goes through, that'd be a nice little addition to the city right there. To throw obstacles in the way that we could, we have the opportunity to solve it, cause it's gonna have to be a public hearing anyway. So, it could be a separate public hearing, just insert that sentence in there and. If it all got approved, then.
Still might want us to keep the facade.
I see what you're saying. I just, I guess I've always, um. I read that at some point in time where. Um, single-family housing did not have to. Adhere to the overlay district regulations, and I guess. And it's just the review procedure, not.
They're just.
The overlay district standard, okay.
Yeah, there's not anything in there that currently gives Jeremy and his department the opportunity to exclude them, even in their exclusive review, so.
So, here's my question. Everything within four hundred feet of Center Street, so does this mean that every house? In this subdivision has to adhere to the overlay district? It's not just what fronts. Center Street, because it, it goes four hundred feet, within four hundred feet of the center line of Center Street. So, the first few houses would have to adhere to.
At least the material.
I think that would be a stretch, that, that four hundred feet is to define the boundaries of the, of overlay district and. This, in my opinion, would, if it, if it's all that, that problem with the two front, two lots fronting Center Street, I think that would. I think it would be a stretch to say, if you had a disagreement in interpretation, the board adjustment could labor. Well, they could define that, it'd be easier than a waiver, they could, they could interpret that definition. The, the overlay district should not be a suicide pact.
Oh, I know that, but I'm just thinking, you know, the, um. The, you know, I'm just, I'm just looking at the way, you know, the way it's read. Actually, I don't think it's read this way anymore, because my book is old, and we've made changes to it since. I printed this off, I need to print off a new copy. Cause I know we've had changes to the overlay district since this has been printed, but anyway, I mean, I'm just thinking. You know, if you're talking about, you know, which way a building is gonna face, then, you know. And if it's in the overlay district, how far into the subdivision is that gonna create an issue with? You know.
It does say in paragraph three of the review procedures, then consider request a reduction of development standards on properties that's in the district. That are not fronting Center Street, you can reduce the requirements if they're not. If they're not on Center Street, so all those ones that are back technically aren't on Center Street, so we can hold them to a different standard.
That's enough of a.
To me, I think we put that in, I think we put that in there for that very reason.
Then I think we had foresight when we did it.
I think we're okay to not have to worry too much about the four hundred feet, if they're not facing it, we can kind of peel back a little bit.
So, the point stands that we still wanna consider clarifying. The furniture, the, the orientation.
Jeremy, I can get together and present you something, and we'll. Go ahead and write a public hearing, a public address if you want to, this is what we're considering.
Yeah, I mean, cause we're gonna have to have a public hearing for the rezoning anyway, like you said, we might as well throw that into it as well.
And this may even be some better language, giving the planning commission some discretion.
Yeah, can you, um, like, for our next meeting, can you? Write something up, you know, that we can.
We can work out a couple of alternatives for you, you can have a public hearing, sell it to you on the. It's got, this, this happens every time we approach this overlay district, and I'm thinking that. Ginger might have to say grace over it, but there needs to be something in there that grants the planning commission some common sense flexibility.
Yes. But we don't want.
I want you to know that, but. Every, every time it comes up, though, if it's strictly construed, there's a problem.
I think we, every situation that we, we come into in dealing with this is, is different. Is a, you know, a different, is a different situation that always has, you know, variables and.
Well, the other thing you have to think about is there hasn't, there hasn't been a lot of development that's been. Subject to it, since it's been implemented, the, the one I can think of is the, uh, medical clinic that's nearby. And they met the requirement.
And then there's been the Staves.
And then the.
Four Center Street, which. They met the requirements on paper.
Yeah, we'll see if they get built that way.
Yeah, I think, I think it's working, it's just that they're.
It's not tested often enough.
That you need some flexibility.
Yeah, I think so, I think so.
Well, I guess we'll.
I'll pass all of this along to the board, tell them that they'll need to. First and foremost, uh, get intent of each lot, and if it is what we're assuming. Rezoning will be their first step. In the process.
So, we spoke enough about this, next item on the agenda is a list of open permit applications.
Okay, that's all the yellows on the little sheet that you all have. Um, I'll get to the red dots in a minute, um. We had a pretty good month, um, another duplex. Commercial, let's just do this. I apologize. No, this is okay, this is all right, I think. I think I do have the wrong printed, I apologize, does anybody have the, no, I didn't send these out.
Oh, shoot, give me one second.
I think I printed the wrong one, I apologize.
I'm not texting Mayor Chairman on Cypher.
You gotta, you gotta know how to do that in your head, you're not gonna carry a calculator around the rest of your life. Ever have a math teacher tell you that? It's not like you're gonna carry a calculator around in your pocket all the time.
I'm excited about a new, um, a new construction, a residential on, um, Center Street.
There is, that's, this is, this is correct, I have it right.
Is that a single-family house, it's a big, it's gonna be.
Yes, it's gonna be a good-sized, single-family going in, but anyway, this is correct, we have another duplex get put in or started.
And that's on East Palm?
On East Palm, which is about, it's about two blocks down from the previous one that was just completed, which is actually just completed.
Lots of the east or west?
Oh.
Where?
West.
East.
East, actually, to the east, to the west is the one that was just completed.
Toward the Atlantic Ocean, I said.
East. The side that the sun comes up on.
That is a nice duplex that's built there, so. Same people, it'll be just as nice. Um, had a couple of remodels go up. The, um. Walter Ellis has gotten his to start, he's getting started on both of his. Two more duplexes over on this mews that we have approved, and they're starting to move on those. Again, the new one on South Center, and then another renovation on Third Street that's kind of behind the courthouse.
Has the proposed. Development on Navajo begun?
That has actually, they came to me middle of the month, early of the month, I guess I should say, and they told me that that was gonna be on hold for now. That they decided that they weren't gonna get it far enough along for it to be feasible at the time, so they put it on hold. I just informed them that they have twelve months to start, or the whole process starts over again.
So, they, twelve months to start.
Yes, sir, the.
Did they pull a building permit?
They had not, they'd gone all the way through, they had done everything we asked, had even, uh, done the bond, and I, I had it in hand. And had everything ready to go, all they had to do was come and pull the building permit, and then they just informed us, we were, they were gonna hold off.
So, what was approved? The large-scale development?
Plat was approved for them to start infrastructure and get moving, and the bond was. Going to give them permission to start construction on the plats prior to having the pre, the, the infrastructure done. The bond was in case they ever decided to stop doing the infrastructure, they had to pay us to get it completed.
Get it finished.
They were ready to go.
What's the twelve-month clock for, tied to?
That's tied to the pre plat approval, for them to do all the infrastructure and all that.
Okay, so, if it's not finished, then the pre plat reverts to the prior.
I think we're about to, I had to go through the whole process.
Got it.
Okay, that covers that, now, the last thing I wanted to show, this is just something me and Mr. Montagnon have been kind of talking about, gave everybody a little. This one. Um, we had talked earlier in the month, just kind of in talking of. What has been built and what, um, has been done in the past. So long, and what I have here in this drawing is, in the, basically the past month and a half. These are the buildings, or families, multi-families and single families that have been. Built or approved in the past year and a half. Now, that does include, in my drawing that I've done, that did include, uh, Navajo over there on the corner, so you could eliminate. Seven of the multi-families from that list up there. But the real thing that I would like to point out, and I find pretty interesting, is that you really have to look at it as. If you go back, and that's why I brought this with the red dots, I mean, if you go back into the past year. Of those, many two that are showing on there. Eight of those are this year, so, in spite of. Quite high construction costs and. The cost of everything being pretty high, or everything, a lot is going on, and. If you count. Possibilities of this one here, plus a few more that I know of, there's. I know of at least twenty more that are, eleven on here plus about ten more, that. Are either gonna be brought up next month, or very close to. And so, we're talking about, if, if one of them I've intended is probably gonna come up next month, then. That'll be a lot, that'll be, you know, a large amount of new construction on just residential in the past six months. It's pretty impressive, and a lot of that has to do with the effort that this room has put in to. Making. The construction process easier.
Yeah, it's good.
Because the next one that I'm talking about that come next month, plus this one included, they all deal with. Multi-family things that would have to come to y'all. Passing of all the effort that we went through, the struggles that we went through towards the end of last month, and a little bit of this year. It's really, was a good thing, because it's, it's really helping people. Get. Residents is built in all of them, it's a wonderful thing.
Would you be willing to make that statement in your update to city council next month as well?
Absolutely, and, and me and Mr. Montagnon are quite done, we have more things we're showing that are really.
That's great, this is, this is really telling data, I know we. We could probably even dive further in and do a year-over-year percent increase perhaps, or maybe it's a decrease, I don't know, but.
Also plan on us, we're gonna look into. How many projects were renovated that were unoccupied.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, we're gonna look into how many empty lots we have in the city, versus how many we've torn down.
Sure.
There, we're kind of gonna pull a whole array of the lot and. And then we'll do our little dance and say we're doing a good job, I mean, I don't know, but.
Let me add to that, cause, you know, you're talking about working on the revised plan. And, uh, I've been driving around and looking, talking, talking to Jeremy and, and just looking. And if you take just what he's got here now, uh, handwritten on his page. And we generally sign two-point-three, two-point-four people per household. Uh, that also comes up to eighty-five people, which is twice the number of the census tables over a ten-year period. And. I'm all in favor of economic development, I do not want disparage, economic development, efforts at all, please bear with me. But there are more jobs on thirty-mile radius of Long Oak, and there are people wanting to fill those jobs. And, in my opinion, a thing that we could look at, just taking off of what he said. How can the city grow people, and if we grow people? Then we get business.
Right.
To support those people, we get, uh, no, another plumber in town, we get an electrician in town, which we don't even have now. And that begins to build, or we get builders coming into town to build things. Long Oak is not growing fast enough to attract the big subdivision builders. Uh, and we may get there, but right now, what we're attracting are people that are building on these individual lots. And when the city threw a long series of misadventures, mistakes and fixes and all sorts of things. Made it a lot easier to build on vacant lots. And I've just driven around town, there are a tremendous number of vacant lots in this city, and I know a lot of them aren't for sale, people don't like to sell. Inherities and, and all that, but still, we see that some of them are selling, and they'll continue to sell. And I would suggest to the planning commission that in, in working on the plan, that that be a primary. Driving force right now. Develop the undeveloped land in the city, the infill development that has water, sewer to it, that, good water and sewer now. Uh, top rate, it has fire and police protection, good fire and police protection. We had a neighborhood problem, I never heard this weekend, and the police were there within minutes.
You should start, you should start those things too.
And what I like to see on this, what I like to see on this is. Is the infill, I mean, you've got four new constructions going in on Teresa Lane, that only helps. When you have new houses surrounded by older homes, that only helps those older homes to. To up their value, and it, and it helps the neighborhood, and you've got.
They have one. Extra iota cost to the city.
Yeah, and I'm wondering.
They don't have another foot of water line, they don't have another foot of sewer line, they don't have another pump station. These cities with explosive growth now are realizing that they have a forest. Of pump stations that they're gonna have to. of pump stations that they're gonna have to
Maintain.
maintain until palm trees grow on the moon.
Yeah.
And those things cost a lot of money and have to be replaced maybe twenty-five or every twenty-five. But every, every house that goes up on an existing vacant lot doesn't require a pump station or anything like that.
I would be interested in incentivizing infill development in some way with a
I think we are, I think we just did, but I, yeah, go ahead.
I'm talking about eliminating some portion of fees in some way.
It was either what?
I don't, I don't, it's some type of application fee, like waiving application fees for infill on previously planted?
An incentive for, an incentive for developers, for investors to, to infill instead of trying to.
I would want it to be good policy, um, oh.
You know, and another thing to consider on some of these is, there are some of these infill empty lots that don't meet the square footage requirements of what they're on.
That's the kind of incentive that you.
Waive that.
Possibility to do.
There's a, there's a twenty-five.
One that's six hundred square feet short.
There's a twenty-five percent reduction on, of, there's a twenty-five percent reduction of the requirement, James explained this to me, of the requirement in previously planted areas.
It's called.
That's an incentivized?
Uh, no, it's just a, it's a.
That's a longstanding, but, but the city could further incentivize it and.
Is that clear, or is that just a standard that we?
I asked James Walden about this a while back, kind of in the interval, so you weren't here. And I don't know, I didn't ask you this, Jimmy, but James is like, well, you can reduce it by, the requirement by twenty-five percent, meaning a ten foot setback is seven and a half.
Okay.
Et cetera, et cetera, lot size.
Yeah, I think that'd be, that would help a lot.
Dive into that and maybe make it further easier, so it's like, well, this is non-conforming, it's like, well, it's previously plat, i.e. an infill opportunity, let's make it even easier to, to do what we're trying to do.
Another thought, I won't get into it, but it's another thought that I'd like to bring up.
I think we, I think we did that, there's, there's two houses over on Locust and Hicks. One's on the corner of Locust and Hicks, the other's on Hicks, and I think we did that, like, I don't know, seven, time flies, it's probably been seven, eight years ago.
It's already in the code.
And I think we, I think we did that for those, I think the corner lot.
It may have applied to it, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
I'd like to consider that as a possibility, something to put into that same deal with, since we're having this meeting, or a public hearing next month, it's possibly something to put into the U C as a a reduction in zoning size for infill lots.
Let's look and see if it's.
As long as we're putting half baked ideas out there.
What you can do, uh, I did this in another city once, not, not to the scale, I tried to do it in another city and they, they're dragging their feet. It's called, uh, uh, what I've called it is infill P U D.
Yep.
That you could take a small parcel, no minimum size.
Yeah.
But actually drawing what you're gonna do there, make it like a P U, P U D, and that you have to specify what's going on.
Right.
But there's no minimum size, so somebody could take a small lot and do something like that with it, in fact, somebody could take a subdivision like this, that current size requires, you couldn't do a P U D, but what if you could do a smaller scale P U D, and they could have two commercial sites facing the street and residential behind it, so that's something that could be incorporated in, but it could be made a lot easier. I would be careful reducing fees, 'cause it still costs the city money for Jeremy to do his job.
True.
That, that, kind of rocky road, but there, there are way, there, I, I think your idea is excellent.
Removing different types of barriers, not necessarily the obvious ones, but maybe some less obvious ones. And I love the P U D, uh, I love the opportunity to, um, this is another thing that some cities have done. They, they basically have a pattern book at City Hall of pre-approved, you know, um, site designs and, and plans that have already gone through the approval process, uh, for certain, for infill or for whatever.
So you don't have to go through with like waivers or anything like that.
A small, it's really designed for small developers, where we would have essentially already invested in the schematic design of, on residential. Uh, that's, we're ways from that, I'm saying that's a tool that some municipalities use, and it's a small developer incentive to say, you don't have to go out, pay to have it designed, we already paid to have it designed, if you wanna pre-approve thing, here's five. And they fit on lot sizes from this to this, and we have this many lots that fit that, you could come in today and pay a bill, pay your, uh, pay your, um, building permit, application fee and be done. You know, because administratively, there, it already would, would apply to X number of whatever infill lots that may exist.
Get back to the, you know, with the plan, I think if this is the first focus in progressing the new plan.
Yeah.
We could plan forty, fifty lot subdivisions all day long, until somebody comes along, wants to build one of those, then we're just whistling and, and hoping, but this is something that's happening here.
Yeah.
And the city is helping it happen already, and it could help it happen some more. Or if you could, every month, you could come in and say, we're putting a duplex up, that's
Yeah.
two point three times two people.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Census Bureau.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want us to have to stay late every month, but if that's the case, I don't mind staying till eight every
Well.
Every once a month.
Yeah, at least do, um, at least, if you could start reporting these stats as part of your community development report.
Yeah, and I'll definitely bring this up in the next.
That'd be great. Um, the, uh, another word on infill, how appropriate or inappropriate is, would it be for the city to have basically a catalog of empty lots? Of known empty lots, just to understand where those, uh, opportunities lie, where the potential is.
I, I can compile one.
For him.
I'm not sure where the county's accessory office is, last time I checked, it wasn't very far, but there are accessory offices in the county, they can put that up pretty fast, and what they just got. I don't, I've got the same information.
They're right, they're right here.
Hundred yards away from me, so I can, I can get that by next month, that won't take long.
That'd be great, 'cause again, I mean, that's a resource that small developers. And if that word gets out, they may be knocking on your door about that, hey, where, what, where is this, you know, so. It's public record anyway, you're just making it easier for people, you're reducing steps to get to the public record, basically.
How many houses are listed now?
How many houses are
Listed for sale?
Currently available for sale?
Think three.
Three.
Yeah.
It was two last months.
Yeah, it's three, there's a thirty-nine thousand dollar house in Furlough, and there is a three hundred thousand dollar house off Culture Road, and there's a four hundred twenty-five thousand dollar house in Cricket Lane.
Now, there's one over on McKinley, I think.
It's under contract.
That's good.
Yeah, the first day.
Okay, good. Science's been up for a minute, so I just didn't know.
Yeah, it's, um, I mean, there are, there are probably fifteen houses under contract that are closing within the next thirty to forty-five days, but there's three available to buy.
Amazing.
It's nothing, I mean, and there's.
Almost like we gotta start building them, huh?
And, and, and that's initially, it's just, you know, it's just the market, it's the nature of the market right now, um, you put your house up for sale and it's gonna be sold within forty-eight hours, it'll be under contract in forty-eight hours. It's just the way it is right now. Um, problem is, if, if you sell your house, you have to have a, a house to buy. And that's, that's the biggest issue that we're coming up with right now, people wanna sell their houses, but they don't have, there's not any inventory, there's nothing to buy. So, you know, it's like, well, I can't sell my house right now because there's nothing to buy.
Yeah.
So, um.
This is exciting.
It's.
This is good news.
Yeah. It's hard, you know, when you've got buyers looking for houses and there's nothing to sell them, and when a house comes up, everybody and their brother, you know, is looking and bidding on the same house, so you've got
It'd, it'd be a lot harder.
Ten buyers looking at the house and making an offer on one house.
It'd be a lot harder if we hadn't started quite a while back, trying to clear the path for new construction though, so.
Well, in, in new constructions are selling, um, you know, anytime a new construction comes up on the market, it's sold before, um, you know, they get the walls up, so new constructions are selling. Existing houses are selling, so.
It goes fast, I mean, the duplex on Palm, it is in construction right now, I believe it already has two renters in it, and it's still several months away from being done.
Yeah.
Is how quickly, just to go with your point.
And, yeah, rental property is the same way, um, people are, you have to get on a waiting list, there's no rental property available in town, anywhere, and it's not just, it's not just Lone Oak, it's Lone Oak County, it's Pulaski County, you have to get on a waiting list for a rental right now, they're just full. So, um, anyone who wants to buy a house and fix it up and rent it out, there's a house on eighty, there's a house on Highway eighty-nine, thirty-nine thousand dollars, so, um,
In the city or?
Not my listing, it's in Furlough. It's like the second house, once you, once you turn onto eighty-nine, right there at Furlough grocery, you turn onto eighty-nine, go into Cabot, it's like the second house on the right, and it's, it's a tear down, so pretty much, it's pretty bad. Huh?
It's land, is what it is.
Yeah, so, anyway, um, but, yeah, I mean, anyone that can, uh, like the house on McKinley, okay, that is, they pulled, when was their permit?
Two oh two.
Was that the address? I think if that's the address, yeah.
Two oh two McKinley, yeah, that actually, I think I need to turn that into green, I think it's.
Rolled up now.
Yeah, they pulled, they, uh, they got a permit in October of two thousand twenty-one, and they have, um, they remodeled it and put it on the market and and it's under contract and will close probably within the next thirty days, so.
I did do the final walkthrough on that one, it's actually very nice.
It's a cute, it is a cute house, I've, I've been in it, and they did a really good job.
And I need to start on some of these, like that one, I need to start taking pictures of the inside of it when I walk through it to see
Yeah.
what they need to do, because I wish I had some, just four and extra pictures of that one would be pretty, you know, a good pat on the back to those people, because they did a really good job of renovating that one.
And that's another infill example.
Yes, yes.
But we, we have people, like these people that bought this house, we, we have people out there that are buying foreclosures and fixing them up and, and selling them, the house on, the house across on Palm Street, it was, it went up on the courthouse steps, it sold, I don't know what they're gonna do with it, I don't know if they're gonna live in it, or if they're gonna rent it, or if they're gonna sell it, that they've gone in, that house that, I know you've written letters to them before, about their yard, huh?
They totally cleaned it out, it's been.
I mean, but the yard's been cleaned up, they've cleaned the house, they've gutted the house, cleaned everything out, and they're starting, I saw construction workers up on the roof the other day, so they are.
Across from Primary School.
Oh, yeah, yeah, two story house.
On West Palm.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's got that, uh, Mansard roof.
It's got bamboo in the front yard.
Yeah, so.
So, you know, there, there are things, we need people like that, and there are, there are people in town that are, that are doing things like this, and, you know, you've got, um, Diamond Construction, you know, they're building four new constructions on Teresa Lane, you've got, um, Professional Finish who, um, just did the duplex on East Palm, and they're building another duplex on East Palm. Um, you know, you've got investment people coming in.
Yep.
And.
That's an important point to make too.
That's that.
They're all local developers too.
Yeah.
I tell you, I think we may be on to something here that's really bigger than normal. There's, you ask any planner, what's the biggest problem coming? Someone said drugs and crime, most of them will say the housing shortage. What you're saying is, yes, there's a housing shortage. What are most cities doing about it? They're hiring some big engineering firm to design bicycle trails for them. But this is a case where you're looking at the basics and saying, what can you do to get people to come here and build? I'm wondering if we could identify this group and communicate to them somehow that the city appreciates what they're doing, and we would appreciate any comments that they have back to the Planning Commission to make their job even easier and more, more pleasant.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, we can't, we have their, we have their contact information, you know, but you're right, all these, a lot of these people are, um, they are, they are local people, I know the people that did McKinley are from Carlisle, that's local enough. Um, and of course, you know, Diamond Construction, they're here, local in town, um, Professional Finish, they're, they're local.
What's his last name?
Roger.
Four, okay.
So, it's just exciting, it's, it's exciting to see, and I, I had a builder, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna ramble, I had a builder, um, a while back, he built the two houses, the Locust and the Hick Street houses right there. And, um, that was his dream to buy lots and build little houses on them. And he built those too, and then he passed away. Um, but that was, he, that's what he wanted to do, and, uh, Diamond Construction has done a lot of that, they did, um, the house on Barn Street, I think they've done one on Church Street. They may have done another one, but they're, they're doing that, and I like to see, I like to see this, because it just, it helps the neighborhoods for one, it helps these older neighborhoods, um, you know, pick up their value on their houses, and when you have a new construction next door, you know, you kinda wanna spruce your house up a little bit too, so it makes the people in the neighborhood feel a little bit more proud of their, of their neighborhood, so. I, I'm excited in seeing all these little red dots too.
Is, is the city also embarking on demolition project for barely structures?
Yes.
That's gonna open up some.
Where is it?
Well, I don't know. It is the city, I understand the city is getting ready for a pretty, pretty good demolition of.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's Jeremy's department, that's Jeremy's department.
Yeah, I do, I do, I do some of those.
We've had a high success rate.
Suggestion.
In motivating people to either clean up or do their own demolition.
I always take suggestions on that. Maybe not in this meeting, but I will take.
I will, I will email you the address, it needs to be torn down. All right, um, anything else on, any other discussion on any matters? Okay, it is seven ten, and we will adjourn the meeting.
City had a nice birthday party.
Yeah, it was great.
Yes, it was, that was very nice.
Were you there?
I was. You dress up real nice.
Sure did.
Um, let's see, our next meeting is going to be June twentieth.